June Father Gill? Did I say that right?
Yeah. Hello, I'm June Father Gill. I'm the pastor at Everett Memorial United Methodist Church in Nelsonville, June. And I'm also on the Springfield Shelter Rights Alliance and on the Board of Cal. And so every week, I have Wednesday meal with people who are unhoused, who live in Springfield. And so in the last three and a half years, I've gotten to know people because I see them every single week. And so I wanted to make a few comments about the plan. I'm very excited that you're talking about providing more going for housing, a very important need, and also that you're embracing the Housing First idea and the political, I think, lack. I want to add a couple things. One is that I think it's very important that we not forget to look at the assets of the people we're talking to. People who are unhoused are not just needy people. They also have assets. They have work experience, they have philosophies, they have skills, they have lots of things to offer our community, even when they're unhoused. That's what I've discovered. I've had the best theological, philosophical discussions in my whole career and 30 years as a pastor with people who live on the streets. So there's assets out there, and let's not forget that. So when we're looking at job programs and things like that, I have friends who have not been in a job for maybe 15 years, at least three and a half since I've known them. But they have job skills. How are they going to find a job? And they're 50 years old, and they're unhoused. So they don't have any particular disability, but they've been unhoused for a long time, so they have the disability of having been unhoused. So job skills is really important, so I hope we don't let that one fall through cracks and some kind of supportive network for people who are trying to re-enter. Also, I've had interesting conversations with people about landlords. And some of the reasons why people become unhoused is not just that they don't have money to pay for their rent. They run into other kinds of problems with landlords. And one of the programs that I saw in Boise when I lived there was that there was a program, and when someone came to me with a slip saying they would be kicked out of their house, there was a program in place they could go to to talk to, how do I negotiate with my landlord? How do I, you know, talk to him about this? How do I arrange for payments? Whatever it is needed. I see that as a need in our community. Because I've run into several people who have problems with landlords, and they were out, and now they're homeless, and I don't, I only hear their side of the story, but maybe they could have used some help in gushing up the landlords.
We're right at 30 minutes, so if you've got a couple more things on that, if there's something else you want to say quickly, that's great.
No, that's, I think, I'd send that to you. I mean, I have a whole list.
Get the website, I'll give you the website. There's a website, it's right up there. Vicky Perpenan?
Perpenan.
Perpenan. If you're all right.
Well, I work with St. Vitto DePaul. I am the Program Manager of the Second Chance Rehab Program. I have been with St. Vitto DePaul in this program for 18 years, so I have a lot of experience in town. I, first of all, want to commend you because you have a lot of really great ideas that I really think are going to work. And the first one, of course, is increasing more housing. That is probably the hugest reason why people aren't housed, that isn't enough housing for them. Community education, for those out there who really don't have any working knowledge of what it's like to be homeless, unemployed, and things of that nature, and there are so many misconceptions out there that just aren't right, they're not fair, and they really hold people back. There needs to be many, many more transitional emergency shelters. The mission pretty much is the only option, and it often is not the best option. Another huge problem I see that needs to be addressed is protection from slum lords. There are a lot of really awesome landlords out there. There are a lot of landlords who are not awesome, and there isn't a lot of help. Legal aid is able to help 1,500 people here, and that's spread over six or seven different programs. And most of those have nothing to do with housing. I could probably say a, probably a good third of the people who've been in my office would not have been evicted if they'd had some knowledge of what landlords can and cannot do to them. So that's a huge one. I also want to talk about the Housing First model. It is a good model. I have just recently picked up, I don't know if you're aware, the Front Door Intakes. It's the community, the Central County waitlist for the most vulnerable people. I have seen people come into my office where I could hardly stand to see there because they smelled so bad, their alcohol, and they're sitting there begging me to find them some kind of help. They don't want to drink anymore. But they get together in groups to stay in safety, and their peer pressure, and all these other things. And I have seen people go into these housing situations and come out two weeks later as amazingly different people. We need to offer them more help. We also, I believe, need to focus on, you could use fair housing laws to keep people from being evicted, people with mental illness, who do things that is in line with their mental illness, that the rest of us, we don't find it correct, or whatever it is. But if we could offer some kind of assistance around that, it would be a really big deal for a couple people with mental illness. And that's what I'm excited about. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Catherine Hunt?
My name is Catherine Hunt. I'm a member of Occupy United States. I'm also the Chair of St. Mary's Public Outreach Ministry Council, and a member of the Church Women United Board, amongst other things. And I wanted to commend you on really working towards Housing First. I really think that is one of the good solutions. I remember being at a meeting about eight years ago, and it didn't happen here in U.C. at that time, but I'm confident we're going to go ahead and do it this time. I also wanted to say that Church Women United is one of the community groups that try and keep people informed about issues in the community. And at our April meeting, our next April forum, we'll be discussing homelessness. So you're all welcome to attend that at St. Jude's Church. So that is one outreach that we're attempting to do. And all the other groups that, a lot of the faith communities are involved in, are doing good work, but I think we'll all be backing your decisions of doing here. Thank you for all your hard work.
Corey Rodley?
My name is Corey Rodley, and I'm the Executive Director at Junction City Local Aid. And my comment is really about the how of doing this work. While I do not think that the strategic plan is in itself necessarily Eugene and Springfield-centric, I do think that there's an opportunity to, as we move forward, particularly in the subcommittees, to include more people from the rural areas. I think that there's some really unique partnerships that happen in our small towns and our rural areas, and a lot of, I think it could be a model for how we do it on a bigger scale, because you have such an involvement of businesses and churches and individuals and people who are, as we mentioned earlier, people who are clients, who are also part of the solution. And that happens in small towns in a way that it doesn't happen in the city. So my encouragement is, as we move forward, to find, I know we're adding a representative from Oak Ridge, but that's one person from one rural area, to find a way to include more people from rural county in this process, because I think the solution is going to be throughout the county, and that could be really exciting. People who are homeless, who are in precarious, vulnerable situations in small towns, they don't want to leave those small towns. That's their home, and they're often multi-generational families. So to find a way to use that as we move forward is what I would like to encourage you to do. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Corey. Michael Kerrigan.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Kerrigan, the Shelter Rights Coordinator for Community Alliance of Lakeview, Eugene and Springfield, on the Board of Square One Villages, and the steering committee of the United Health Sanctuary. I applaud the hard work involved in creating this strategic plan and the comprehensive nature of the plan. I like the focus on supportive housing, prevention, and the need to eliminate barriers to get in the way of an individual successfully finding housing. However, one big barrier that I did not see addressed was the need to decriminalize homelessness. Too many people have been cited for sleeping, and having a police record often makes it difficult for them to find housing. And, for example, I wish the authorities would leave the unsanctioned camps that are safe and successful alone, because they're working and they're helping folks out. I also appreciate that the plan has a strong focus on finding emergency shelter. What I did not see mentioned, however, was rest stops in the plan as a shelter option. I know from experience that these rest stops are thriving. They're an example to the nation of what can work. And I urge this board to develop a plan to place a rest stop in every ward in the city of Eugene and to place one in the city of Springfield. In addition, I think we can develop more than the 40 safe parking places mentioned in the plan, probably via the car camping program. And it would be wonderful to develop supportive services for those in the car camping program. I'll give an example, Calca is part of the car camping program, and we have a person back there, Sarge, who's involved in the St. Vincent's Veteran Program. Because it's that person from St. Vinnie's to help out, he has a drinking problem. And boy, it's made a difference when I call the support person, St. Vinnie's, we go and we talk to him, it has made a real difference in his life. He's doing a great job now. And so also, we have another person back there in our program, having some serious problems right now, and I'm at a loss about what to do. I could really use a person to come, help me, help that person, to make, you know, to make her, help make her successful in her life. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak here today. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Michael. Katrina Stewart?
I'm Katrina Stewart. I'm part of a local church here in Eugene, Church of Sermon King. And we've had a number of homeless friends over the years. I recently was very intensely involved with a man in our homeless community who was seeking health accessing services. He was a very vulnerable man, and very poor health, and with just a very wide range of issues that were stacked against him. He was unable to read, for one thing, which meant that someone didn't know that about him, gave him a list of resources. He couldn't even access that on his own, and his level of patience was very, very slim. So he really needed immediate answers, or he would give up. I was able to help him get into a stable situation for a while, using various services in town. Unfortunately, we ran out of time, and he died two weeks ago. But in the course of walking closely with him and seeing what he was up against personally, I think there's probably many other homeless people in our community with similar issues. Very difficult for them to personally navigate the system, like someone else already mentioned. There's a very strong need for advocates and people working in the system who are able to devote a lot of energy to walking alongside someone with so many complicated factors. And one of the issues I saw was people working in the services who had very overwhelming caseloads, and so I think we really need more resources of staff who are able to get better, you know, just have the resources on their own to be able to serve those in their caseload. Also, definitely better coordinated effort between all of the services and all of us in the faith community who care. I got to know people in different services who, and it just, it seems to me that there's so many resources available that if we all were aware of how to work together, that would really help so many people. And also, I'm really thankful for the Housing First program and the goals there. I hope that someday our goal can be to figure out ways for everybody, not just those with particular, that fit in particular boxes. So I'm glad to see that there's some flexibility, it looks like, in some of the housing that is being looked for.
We're real close, we've got 30, 30 minutes.
Immediate emergency shelter would be a good thing for us to have more of. In this man's case, that may have made a difference for him. The mission wasn't an option for him. And that's all. Now, thank you for your efforts.
Jennifer?
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Jennifer Friendson Nelson, and I'm on the Human Rights Commission, and I'm representing myself, not the commission, today. I, you know, going later in the list in a public comment period means, wow, a lot of, all of the great things that really, I feel really strongly about have been said. Like the last speaker talking about coordination. I am really interested in investigating what a poverty conference would look like in this county. What would look like for people to actually brainstorm ideas like her idea of how to get things coordinated? We have all sorts of great assets, and the problem solvers, like people who are living on the street, could have a lot to contribute in a forum like that where people get to troubleshoot and dialogue for a longer period of time than the public comment period. I also encourage you with your strategy, since it's a live-in strategy, to set something up that gets the word out to the community, to encourage them to keep contributing ideas to the strategy. So online, or in person, whatever that takes, keep racking people in, so it's not just this one public comment period, but online. Some of the other things that people have discussed, like emergency shelter and criminalization. We cannot let the idea of Housing First seem like it's a silver bullet, because it's not. It's evidence-based, it's an amazing tool, it's great that we're using it, but don't let anyone tell you we should divert resources away from other projects and short-term ideas towards Housing First. Don't let someone use that policy as a way to undermine funding other things that are working, that they may not like so well. But we really need to have an emergency shelter and continue to be creative about it. So don't get bamboozled. We also really need to talk about criminalization. People don't want to talk about it, but it actually exists. And we're going to need to face it square on, because the federal government will have us face it square on if we don't. We do so much better in this community when we solve our own problems. Let's take care of it, instead of having someone come in and say you're violating the Constitution. That's not the way to problem-solve in a town like this, or in a county like this. So I'm encouraging you to do that. Stigmatization, we have a very serious problem with stigmatization. And so people who are paying attention to the Alice study, and the 153,000 people who are impacted by not having financial stability, if we can get the word out about Alice, I think it's a way of educating the public. Because all of the sudden, it's not all the homeless people over there who have all these problems, it's 153,000 people, which more than likely could include the people being critical about the homeless, and say, wow, we're all in this boat together. We're in the pipeline, this 153 strong. What a huge, 153,000, what a huge magnitude of a problem. So all of a sudden, it takes it away from finger-pointing at homeless people and how they're not doing something right, and, or the services aren't right, and turns it into a community dialogue about how do we really face poverty in this county? What can we do differently? And the bigger picture, how do we generate jobs? How do we generate support? So we, our approach changes a lot, and it takes a lot of steam out of that stigmatization piece, so that the naysayers, the people who are upset and have maybe an ideological view, start to turn into problem solvers. Because we really need all the people problem-solving. So I hope we can take that into consideration. And lastly, June 3rd, it's first Friday, the Human Rights Commission is going to do an event, a youth event. And so if there's folks here who are interested in that event, it's real simple, we want to try to get youth there who are either on the street or at risk for being on the street, to come get information. Therefore, we're offering music and food to get people in the door. One venue is the, is the Tice, the library, the Tice and Vasco room, I may not find that right. That room, and also I'm hoping to get another venue down there, so there's two stages, so that we can have enough providers in the room, people who specifically address youth needs. So if you have suggestions for me, find me through the Human Rights Commission office, but ideas about people to be at that event, tabling, or presenting, and maybe you know some youth that you would like to see involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer, was there, the last speaker signed up? Is there anyone else in the room that wanted to come forward? Have you signed up?
Tracy.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Tracy.
It's on the bat. Right, there's more on the bat. We go to the second.
Did you?
Is there other people in this room?
No. Richard, Richard, did you want to speak?
Well, I'm prepared to send off. Anyway, my name is Tracy Johnson. I've been in New York after 32 years. I really appreciate all the work you all are doing and have done. We'll get through this, and we have the will, and I was on Section 8 raising my son in this town who survived well and became Ford Scholar, so he got a full-ride scholarship to college. He's thriving up in North Portland. So that shows statistics, you know, he didn't want to be poor. Biggest reason I'm poor is because he needed me at home, you know? So I'm sure that's nothing new to all the women in the room, and I noticed there's more women than men. Appreciate the men. I could probably be employed in any of your positions. I have that confidence somewhere deep down inside me. Sorry, I've read this thing a million times. Trying to keep it together. My thing I want to talk about is really hard to come into this situation, and hear yourself talked about. So I know there's not really many ways to avoid that. It's just really hard. And it's hard to take the brunt of being homeless. I've been unhoused and underemployed all 32 years in this town. I have a degree in Recreation and Parks Administration from 1983. I studied 3PM program at the University of Oregon. I have a huge debt, because that was a stupid mistake, because I already had an undergraduate I've overworked myself, because public assistance doesn't give you enough money to live. It forces you to work under the table, to provide for the needs of your family and yourself. One of my dreams is to explain how I've survived to a federal judge when I'm in trouble for working under the table. So I'm kind of scattered, throwing stuff out here. You know, Nickel and Dime, that book, and we're talking about having a poverty conference here for 75 bucks, you know, see the little things that add up. Let's exclude the people in poverty and talk about poverty. And my joke is, somebody gave me a copy of Nickled and Dime, but I sold it for cash before I read it. That's what you do. My entire book collection has no monetary value. I am a co-manager with Nathan Showers of the Rest Stop, Lakeview Health Sanctuary Rest Stop, right over there. Worked in the dining room, 2003 to 2005. That brought me into working with homeless people. In the first two years, 80 people died that I knew. Now I'm homeless. My work ethic is not the problem. In fact, it's hard for me not to work every day. I can't stand being lazy. Drives me nuts. I understand the rest stop program's not acknowledged by the Poverty and Homeless Board, and I actually think I have a little intellect left, but because no running water, no electricity, and Human Rights, the big group. You know, you've got to have water, electricity to be considered shelter. We all get that. That's reality. Can be compared to the reality of having a job and making all the right decisions and planning for your retirement. Well, people still need to live, so I'm probably going up to you a minute. We're proving that people stabilize themselves having a safe place, and having a safe place makes people see the value of improving their life, first with housing. The camp provides structure and rules to follow. Example, mandatory chores show that doing dishes is not an option. Responsibilities such as gate duty shows they can be responsible. It gently reminds them that they are valuable and not just a piece of shit that has no place to exist in the United States of America. So I already talked about the dignity part. And like John Ree says, he loves the rest stops because it's zero cost to the city. Well, we get that, you know, but everybody here, me and Nathan manage a camp with no money, so we're poor people managing a camp of poor people, and we are making it look easy. No vacations, no new wardrobes, no stipends, no, here's 20 bucks, thanks for your hard work. We're just doing it. So I don't really like being negative, especially in a public forum. And so I just love you all, and I love the field of work you're in, and I don't know if I wish I was your coworker or not, I'm a little confused by it all. I thank you so much.
Thank you, Tracy.
My name is Richard Veskey. I'm a person who has attempted to become retired from a 25-year career doing fair housing projects in Eugene, Springfield, Southern Oregon, Central Oregon, Eastern Oregon. And so my outlook on housing has to do with legal aspects, if it is protected, if it is not. And my concern is with the low-income, disabled, mentally ill homeless. That's an interesting, special population there. It's interesting the way we see that housing board has developed a kind of model for how they're going to deal with the homeless population. And it seems to be a model based on separating out subpopulation. And they've done by separating out subpopulation of veterans. So the veteran subpopulation has been dealt with, as it were, based on a concept of deserving this, and also a concept of what I call public sentiment. Public sentiment-driven series of categories by which the board is moving toward providing rapid housing to homeless people. The next category, in my opinion, of that sort of population, that subcategory, is going to be homeless people who are mentally ill. There's three basic reasons. One is that, first off, they always fit the diagnosis of chronic homelessness, as described in Notice CPD-14-012, which most of you people who deal with this issue know about in terms of prioritization of chronicly homeless people for Housing First services. They qualify for that. They should be in front of it. Secondly, persons with disability and mental illness, homeless problem, are confronted with a with a non-ending process of exacerbating mental illness. You begin with it, it gets worse. You don't begin with it, you get it. And it happens. There are several interesting studies on it. One of them is called Addressing Post-Traumatic Express Disorder Caused by Homelessness, put up in the National Alliance to End Homelessness, which is a pretty primary organization. The third reason that this subculture should be the next subculture is because of their protection of the Fair Housing Law and the Disability Act, something that I have some competence in. It appears to me that, of course, these disabled persons are protected by this non-discrimination laws, the non-discrimination laws. But they're also protected not just as individuals, but as a class on the basis of disparate impact. Now, those of you who don't know about disparate impact, should look it up on Google. But it is just recently, the Supreme Court has finished a case, Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs versus the Inclusive Community Project, a housing policy agency, let's say PACSET, versus an organization of residents who sued them on the basis of policies of public agency or unintended consequences, disparate impact upon a certain part of the population. In my opinion, that means mentally ill disabled homeless because they are in fact being discriminated against in housing by being put segregated, as it were, in illegal camping situations. That's substantial power. So I think that there's always the issue of asking for help. There's also, in my opinion, in my experience, issues demanding by law. And I think that the board and its efforts are exposed to creating unintended consequence as their standard model that affects whether or not the subpopulation has public sentiment as to whether or not it gets dealt with next. I have a full paper on this, which, you're welcome to read, if you can reach me at richardg@efn.org. I'll send you some.
Thank you, Richard. Wayne, you're signed up, did you want to speak? Wayne Martin?
I better take some of those back if there's any. At my age, you need a little time to decompress. You come up too fast, you get bends. Please, everyone. I do, I'm passing around, I guess, what amounts to a concept. It's been circulated, there's a partial list of people down below that have weighed in on it, having looked at it. There's a few more than that now. We had our first meeting yesterday, just to explore this tents for tents. The point of tents for tents, or whatever it may someday be named, is to offer an alternative for housing individuals who are responsible and who want to use their tents. The point is to reduce the numbers from what they have been in the at-large camps, usually in West Eugene, somewhere near the wetlands. You'll have a chance to read this, so if I could just engage you for a moment. Our desire, if this moves ahead, is to offer churches, other nonprofits, businesses, commercial property owners, an opportunity to help in the solution, albeit perhaps the short-term solution on our way to Housing First, but the immediate solution of allowing people to use their property and to keep an extra pair of eyes on things, perhaps do some yard work and some cleanup work around the property in exchange for its use, to utilize some of the experts already who have been doing this kind of thing to move forward and help us start something like this. It's been accepted with interest by John Reese's office and two of his staff were with us yesterday when we met. We had about 14 people. I want to thank you, Pat, for also expressing your interest in being there. Our next meeting will be a week, two weeks from yesterday, actually, Wednesday, the 30th. We will meet at the library at 1:30. We try to keep the meeting to an hour. We almost made it, but people got a little talk and you can't stop them. Anyway, we're exploring this and wanting to, our next approach will be to several ministers in the area who have large pieces of property, several businesses in the area. We have a couple of businessmen will be doing the inquiries on this, to see if there's yet more interest. An active player is St. Vinnie's and in particular Keith Heath, who really does a lot of this same thing. In closing, it's a bit of a hybrid program. It doesn't, it doesn't have the size of the other rest stops. We think that it's better if it doesn't. So anywhere between four and 10 people, no more than 10, is approximately, we think is a really ideal size. And if you have any further comments about this, if you think about it, want to reflect on it, I'd like you to take down my phone number. I'm kind of a pitch person right now, but I don't expect to be the leader of this project. My number is 831-601-0022. Any questions?
Great. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. Has anybody who signed up have had a chance to speak? If so, I'm going to close our public...